I call this City Workshop of Meeting, Special Meeting, Friday, November the eighth, two thousand twenty-four to order at five thirty-six P M. We would please stand for the invocation provided by Vice Mayor Mervin, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Father God in heaven, God, we want to thank you, praise you, God, for another day, God, that you have allowed us to be here. Father God, we ask you, oh God, to give us guidance, give us wisdom, and give us understanding. Father God, we ask you, God, bless the city of Pahokee, bless the commission, oh God, and staff. God bless our citizens, oh God, in Jesus' name I pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Bab.
Present.
Vice Mayor Mervin.
Present.
Commissioner Bowden.
Present.
Commissioner Cowan Williams.
Present.
Commissioner McPherson.
Present.
City Manager.
Present.
City Attorney.
Present.
City Clerk is present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, thank you Commissioners, thank you staff, and whatever audience we have out in the audience or on social media, media, thank you for being part of our commission meeting today. We have a special meeting called, I believe the meeting called by our City Manager, and there's one topic we'll be discussing on this agenda, it's Resolution twenty-two forty-four dash fifty-two. And we'll have our City Attorney, just read it into the record for us.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution twenty-two forty-four dash fifty-two, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pahokee, Florida, approving change order number thirty-four to the contract between the City of Pahokee and the Florida Department of Transportation, Contract G dash seventeen fifty-three, F M, number forty-four, twenty thirty dash zero one dash fifty-four dash one, for the Barfield Highway Reconstruction Project as set forth in Exhibit A, providing for adoption of representations, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, City Attorney, City Manager, could you give us a brief explanation to this resolution?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, we have commissioned, as referenced, was a need to request a special meeting for this item, for this change order item. The fact that we only have one scheduled commission meeting for this month, and there was a need to have action to pretty much come to maybe give us an opportunity to substantially complete the Barfield Highway project. And just for a little history, it's been well documented, but just to give a brief history for the audience and those that may be listening in. Back in March of twenty nineteen, the city entered into a grant funding agreement with the state of Florida, namely the Florida Department of Transportation. And that was approved through Resolution of the City Commission. And subsequently, in two thousand twenty-one, the agreement between the city and Rosso Development began. The project was originally scheduled for completion in June of two thousand twenty-three. And subsequently extended through a couple of extensions to June twenty twenty-four and to the extension that we're working on now, to December twenty twenty-four respectively. This resolution will allow a change order to occur to complete the final lift of asphalt as scheduled in the contract. The reason and rationale for tonight's meeting is there has been a major increase in the cost of asphalt from the inception of the project. And your backup information has provided the original contracted amount per unit and what it is and what has been recommended for now is reflects the total amount of a hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and one dollars and fifty-two cents to complete that final lift. And that's for the entirety of Barfield Highway Project. And upon completion of the asphalt work, the city, its inspectors in Rosso will develop a punch list of all the outstanding items to be completed by before the agreed-upon completion date, which is the end of the calendar year as well. So the difference in this request is that up until maybe the last commission meeting, all costs was covered under the grant amount. This particular cost will be borne by the city. And we have requested concurrency by both the city's inspectors, which has been approved, and also by Rosso Development and also Department of Transportation. We requested the refund through the grant amount from D O T, and they agreed that it was a, an item that should be adjusted based on the price increases, but they denied funding it because of the limitation of funds available for completion. To date, we have a total of a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars left of the original three point eight million dollars. There's an opportunity, if nothing else is charged, and we have a couple of different things in consideration that may be borne with that remaining balance. We have some C E I costs, and also we have whatever's left with the punch list that's not developed yet. I will add, I know this is relatively new to, to of the newer commissions. But I will tell you, for a three point eight million dollar project that's lasted since two thousand twenty-one, it's not uncommon for the city to have to pay, or the city have to be in a position to have contingency funds for cost overruns. And those contingency funds usually on a major project of this magnitude, somewhere around ten percent. So it's not uncommon for the city to be in a position, or have to be in a position, to pay under this contract maybe three hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars based on the industry, the overall industry and how major projects like this run. We're requesting that the city cover this cost of a hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and one dollars with the possibility of recouping some of it on the back end of the project. I mentioned we have a hundred and sixty-nine thousand available now. We don't know where that number will be at the end of that punch light, punch list item. There is a possibility we may be able to receive some of it back on the back end. But the urgency of the matter is that if we miss the window to engage with Ranger Construction who's providing the asphalt, the timeline is that this needs to be approved and in a contractual agreement by the eighteenth, which is next week. And that will allow, actually, by the twelfth, and on the eighteenth, that will begin the commencement of the final lift by Ranger Construction. Ranger Construction has agreed through Rosso Development and the city to adjust their schedule to be able to accommodate this final lift. With completion of the final lift, we stand a very good chance of completing the overall project, including the punch list by the end of the calendar year. So that's, that's my recommendation, that the commission approve this change order as presented and allow the project to get to the point of completion.
I know once this item is motioned and seconded, we're gonna have discussion, but I'm just at the urgency, want to know, have we did any negotiation with Rosso as far as reducing, I know the cost of the asphalt has increased, but I feel they should have some responsibility too, to kind of absorb some of that cost that we don't have a one hundred percent cost that the city is responsible for because there have been numerous of change orders. And I know this is a large project, a three point eight million dollar project, but in addition to that three point eight million that they have received with the thirty-three previously change orders, you're talking about at least additional, an additional million dollars at a minimum, I feel, that they have received. And that's just a top of my head estimate of what those change order costs previously. This is something that I think really needs to be done, but they should, I mean, we're saying that it costs, and I know it costs them some additional money to do it, but it should be a shared responsibility, I'm just asking that we entertain any type of opportunity to negotiate with them and see if they would even absorb half of this cost with us.
In the short answer is yes, sir, we have, from the very onset, staff, namely Ms. Adams and myself, has been on the phone around the clock, basically with them having negotiations and having conversations about whether or not any of this could be minimized or any of this could be a part of, of their process as well. And, and their responses, mostly it is, their response has been hinged on the fact that the project is taking so long to be completed. And if the project was complete on time, on schedule, then we wouldn't be at this juncture. The other part of it is that they have not, they have been patient enough with the city to not take any other measures that the contract allows for. And then the other part of it is that we have talked to D O T, we tried that angle as well, to see if there was anything else that they would consider to allow us to have this under the grant. And as you, as you mentioned, there have been many numerous change orders, and the contract allows for some deviation in the cost as it relates to the change, the design and the construction piece of it. D O T has been very, very considerate in allowing all of the change orders, they have absorbed all of the change orders that have not fallen back to the city's responsibility. And that's because we've been at the table requesting, please provide concurrency with funding. Please provide concurrency with funding because the number of challenges that we face. And they have been, up until this point, they have been, and one other, the last commission meeting, one change order that we were responsible for because city staff at the time agreed to a design change. But outside of that one, I think it was at thirteen thousand, and this particular one at a hundred and twenty-one thousand, the city has not had to pay anything. So considering the D O T offerings or providing additional funding outside of the three point eight and Rosso Development's willingness to continue to work with the city and absorb some costs, but more importantly, time, effort and energy on a four-year project at this point is something that I think we've done, we've exhausted every avenue in requesting additional assistance that we could possibly have had an opportunity to do so. And I know, I know that it is, it's a tremendous amount based on our budget, but I really believe that we have the ability through the general fund to cover. And keep in mind, if there's any dollars remaining after this project, after next month, then we're gonna, we'll be requesting to receive anything that we've paid out on the back end.
My last quick question is, I know a lot of these projects, some of the delays and majority of the delays was because of the change orders caused some additional time to be done in this project. But have we as a city been responsible for any major delays in this construction work?
Yes, sir, we have, we have been, no fault of our own, but our overall conditions have been responsible for maybe ninety, ninety-five percent of them. And I kind of, I'll kind of list a few. The fact that we did not, we were in a position that we didn't have any funds to pay for the continued construction of the project because of J L A C. That froze everything and that caused everything to be delayed. And it became almost like a avalanche effect because there's work that needed to be done that couldn't be done because there was no funds in place to pay for the work that had already been done. So on a couple of different occasions, they, they just pulled off of the project, there was nothing being done. So that's, that's one of the bigger ones. And then prior to me coming, maybe way prior to me coming, there was a lot of confusion, for lack of a better term, from the city's standpoint of having things done on a timely, in a timely manner. It was almost a nine-point period where virtually very little or anything that was done on this project. So that coupled with what I just explained was the primary reason why the project fell behind for so long, which have put us in a position where we're playing catch-up. And as you know, if, if, if a scheduled two-year project, eighteen-month project, end up being a four-year project, then at the very end of that process, you'll, you'll begin to see the residual effect, both from a timing standpoint, which has caused us to ask for multiple extensions, and also from a cost standpoint. Again, I would say that we have been very fortunate that the state has been agreeable in, in absorbing most of this. And again, without being repetitive, it's not uncommon for a project of this magnitude to have the owner, with the city being the owner, having to budget contingency for it. And the reason why we don't have the contingency to, we didn't put a contingency in the budget because the funds are just not there. So we are still fortunate that the cost is not a lot much higher than it is today.
At this time, City Commission, having heard our City Attorney properly read this resolution to the record, having our City Manager properly explain the reason behind it, what is your pledges for the resolution itself, and that would allow us, once we do a motion and a second, to have further discussion?
Question. Despite all the delays in the negotiation process.
Madam Bab, I move to accept Resolution twenty-two forty-four dash five dash fifty-two.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Bowden and probably seconded by Vice Mayor Mervin for the adoption of Resolution twenty-two forty-four dash fifty-two. Call for questions.
Well, my question is, did we entertain in our negotiation? And I know we did numerous of change orders on this same particular project, but if we decide to agree to pay this a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars, is there a guarantee that our road is gonna be fixed? Because I would really hate to see us go outside of our budget and give them that money, and then we're still at the same place where we are. Was that even entertained in the negotiation process?
Yes, sir, and that was a part of the negotiation process when we received prior to this week, and it continues to be as of an hour and a half ago. We were actually out on Barfield Highway, Ms. Adams and myself, along with Rosso Development staff, literally walking the highway to make sure that we point out those things that remain outstanding concerns for us as, as a commission and as a community. Few of the things that we talked about is the fact that once this final lift is done, the, the potholes, we wouldn't have any issues with potholes because of the stands now. The cost of time and weather and everything associated with an unfinished road, there are potholes there through different sections of the, of the highway. And Rosso Development agreed that before the final lift is done, they will go in and they would put a much harder asphalt in all of the potholes to make sure that they are completely filled, which will allow the final lift to be of no concern as it relates to future potholes. The other item that you've seen and people have been complaining about, there's three sections of the road that was damaged when the first lay was done. And it was caused by a couple of different factors. We're not sure if the final mix of that initial lay was mixed properly. Rosso Site Development agreed that they would go back in and re-mill those sections. That's a part of negotiations that we were explaining to other, at their cost, and make sure that those deviations are corrected. The only outstanding item that we were in discussion about to some length today is the, the intersection of Barfield and Obama. And what happened there is that the, there is not a tran, a smooth transition between that intersection. And some work, milling work should have been done, or at least twenty feet or beyond, going down Obama to alleviate the, the big bump, the drop that was there. They're proposing that, that milling is done to allow for a smoother transition. We, on site, the representative from Rosso emailed us on site with what could possibly be a fix to that. It was originally discussed a year plus ago, and it was never addressed. What we are of the belief is that once the final lift is done, there stills, there still would be some concern with that deviation there. So there is a contingency plan in place to have that addressed. But the Barfield Highway Project as designed, as agreed upon, all of those issues should go away.
Did you address the one by the red light, the deviation there?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Is it the same as the one you're referring to also, and similar?
That's, that's the one that I'm referring to. Yeah, there's no other challenges with, with intersections anywhere along the run of the highway. That, that, that is one.
And the sidewalks, just by observation, almost like a. Seal movement, it's not a complete, smooth sidewalk. Have, did y'all notice that or am I not picturing what I thought I see when I walk or drive through it?
Yeah, you, you've seen that and we've addressed that in some cases, and other cases there is still, needs to be some work. Done by Water Utilities that will be done to complete some of that sidewalk work, but let, let me just explain something. And with the, the fact that there was not a demucking, a complete demucking of that road with backfill. And this is the first time that any major work has been done on that highway. Uh, and we have others in the, in, in the hopper to be done, McClure and some of the other projects. Unless we completely. Dig up that whole entire road. And demucking it and backfilling it with the proper materials. Mayor and Commissioner, you guys been here most of your life and not all your life. That, that's gonna occur because of just the fact that we live on, live in the area that we do. If it's not done, demucking and backfill, you're gonna have that deviation, but to the very best of our ability to prevent that. Um, that has been done on this project.
I have a question. I never saw the original contract, so demucking that was not part of the original contract? Cause I've never seen the original contract of, you know, to get to the three point eight million. So I, was demucking, demucking it was not a part of it?
No, it was not a part of the original contract. To demuck that road, the length of it, it's, it would have cost at least another one and a half, two million dollars.
So can I get a copy of the contract maybe tomorrow to see what, how was the three point eight million dollars came up to see what it was that was actually. Supposed to be done, cause I've never seen the original contract.
I will, I will send you that Commissioner, and I will also uh point you to part of the backup that gives you. Um, a detail of the bit form with the prices, with the unit per price and a quantity. It's in your backup, starting on page fifteen, and it gives you every aspect of the project. By unit, quantity, unit cost and subtotals. And just for reference, if you look at item, pay item zero-three-three-seven dash seven dash eight-zero. The asphalt concrete friction is what we're in conversations with now. The original price per unit was a hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty, fifty cents. Over time, we're at. Two hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty-four cents a unit, so you can see the increase. The original cost and pricing for that was one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred eighty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. And that's reflected also in Russell's change order request. Uh, if you see that in your backup.
You say zero-three-three, what's the orig- where's the zero-three-three?
It's on page, on page fifteen. If you're on page fifteen, if you go a little bit greater than halfway of the page where it says asphalt concrete friction. So it was one fifteen point five, point five zero per unit at a cost of a hundred and thirty-eight, reading that. That's also reflected in the change order request from Russell, where it gives the, the new unit price, which is two hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty-four cents. And.
Okay.
And it's lessed out the original of one thirty-eight, which gives us a total of the one twenty-seven, seven oh two.
Cause I know we did a change order in August and it was ninety-three dollars. If you look when we had our meeting on August, um, I have it right here, August the thirteenth, we did change order number twenty-nine.
Yes.
And it was ninety-three dollars then, so you're saying the original was one fifteen?
What was ninety-three dollars?
Asphalt. If you look at um the change order we did, change order that we got for exhibit, uh, change order twenty-nine. Asphalt here, they had it was ninety-three dollars a unit. And now you're saying the original was one fifteen?
No, I, I'm not sure what you, what you're looking at.
I'm looking at change order twenty-nine.
I understand that, but I'm not sure what, uh, what units and quantity that you're looking at.
Oh, I'm looking at the change order that we, change order twenty-nine that we voted on in August. The unit was one and it was ninety-three dollars a unit. Um, for change order twenty-nine that was given to us as backup in August at the August meeting. Cause we voted on change order nineteen. We voted on that, I mean, change order twenty-nine on August thirteenth.
What resolution number was that? Clerk can pull it up real quick.
Resolution.
Is that twenty-six? If I'm not mistaken.
That came from. The change order is. Resolution number twenty-twenty-four thirty-five.
Thirty-five, is there one? You give me one, one minute so I can respond to your question.
Cause it has something to do with the two line, the two line, the six line stop and the one eight line stop, but they had asphalt included in it. Also at the April ninth meeting as well for asphalt.
Could that be just for, for that particular project?
Yeah, I'm thinking.
Asphalt just for that, that particular, I'm just asking for that particular.
Right, but the price of the asphalt is still the price for asphalt per unit as I'm looking at what you gave me. It's still asphalt. I'm talking about the ass, the price of the asphalt per unit. Yes, it may be for that project, but the price of the asphalt is ninety-three dollars per unit.
Okay, does it, does it give a description? Does it give a description of the asphalt? Cause there's, there are different.
It says, replace S P one-two-point-five asphalt, quantity one, unit T N, unit cost is ninety-three dollars. That means one, right, per one whatever, twelve-point-five for the asphalt. And then I couldn't see the price for the one in April because for the April ninth documents, we didn't get backup documents to see the asphalt because I went back. To the minutes that, everything that was sent to us, and we didn't get backup um for the April, for the April ninth meeting, cause I have that here too. There was no backup documents and I think I had asked about those documents, but I never did receive them because we did a change order on that as well for asphalt. But I just didn't have the backup to see how much it was at April. But I did have it for the one in August, and then here I'm looking at this and it's a different price.
Okay. Could you, again, I don't have what you have, could you give me the? The type of asphalt?
Okay, this was change order twenty-nine from the eighth, from the August thirteenth meeting.
This is the twenty-seven.
It was um number two, replace S P twelve-point-five asphalt, quantity one, unit T N, ninety-three dollars. That was the unit cost for the asphalt.
Give me one second.
And that has something to do with the pipeline that um they needed that asphalt. So it may have been only a small amount, but it gave a unit cost of how much the asphalt cost per unit cost. And that was for the um. It says the change order was needed um for compensation to Russell Site Development for installation of two, two-six-inch line stops and one. One-eight-inch line stop with installation. The line stops are needed, so I guess after they, I said the line stops are needed at Barfield and First Street for the water main shutdown. And the water main tie-in, so I guess they had to re, they had to re-asphalt it.
Okay.
But that was the price of the asphalt then.
Okay, this is not the same grade of asphalt as referenced in the original agreement. This asphalt is not a part of what was bid it. This particular asphalt is a replacement of, of a S P twelve-point-five asphalt. So it's, it's not asphalt, it's replacing asphalt. And they did, did one unit of that and that unit cost was ninety-three dollars. So you're not comparing apples to apples. This is replacing asphalt versus the cost of asphalt.
So it's not the same type of asphalt?
It's not asphalt at, at all. It's replacing asphalt.
But we pay, that's what we were paying for asphalt to replace asphalt that was taken up?
No, ma'am. We're not, this is not the cost of asphalt. The asphalt that was there was replaced with S P twelve-fifth, with, with a different type of material. So it's not the cost of asphalt, it's replacing the asphalt that was there.
So what do we pay for on um? And this change order then, if it's different types, it just said um, so.
Are you, I, I want to make sure that we're looking at the same place. You're looking on, cause I want to make sure I'm asking your question Commissioner. You're looking at the, the breakdown that says material and description, it's under tab two. That says tab one is replacing the base.
Yes.
And tab two is replacing S P twelve-point-five asphalt. It's not giving a cost for putting down asphalt, it's actually replacing the asphalt. And it was one unit of that replacement at ninety-three dollars a unit cost. So the unit cost has nothing to do with the price of asphalt.
Okay, well, maybe you can explain, so explain it to me then on April fourth. Change order twenty-six, the change order for Barfield Highway reconstruction, the change order is to compensate Russell for the asphalt price increase. Um, the additional work was performed as per Russell Development contract to section twelve oh three B, which I never saw that, so I don't really know. What twelve oh three B is, but my question is, okay, they got ten thousand doll, ten thousand five hundred eighty-six dollars and ninety-one cents then. We didn't get any backup information with that, so I guess my question is, because this is kind of sort of reading. Just like the one that we have now that is necessary in order to complete the project. So how much asphalt did they use for that, for that particular change order, change order twenty-six?
Okay.
Cause we didn't get any backup information to know exactly what we were paying for. I didn't see it, and when I went back and looked today. In my documents, it was not attached to the documents either.
Okay, could you give me that date and that uh resolution number?
Uh, yeah, the resolution number is twenty-twenty-four dash eleven. So the only thing we got was the lump sum of ten thousand five eighty-six ninety-one. But not like a breakdown or anything to know how much asphalt that they were getting then. Because that's pretty much reading the same like this in order to complete the project. So I know we pay, I'm just trying to find out how much asphalt we have, even though we didn't pay for it, it came from F D O T. Like how much asphalt do we, was paid for then and just trying to compare to see, you know, what we're needing now, because I know we have paid. Asphalt has been paid for.
Okay, give me a minute to pull it up and I'll. Explain it to you.
And while we're doing it, can I just ask a few questions while you're looking that up, Mr. Jackson? I was trying to write down as you were talking.
If, if you give me a chance to answer this one first.
Okay.
Confused. I greatly appreciate it. Okay, do you have your, you have that full information in front of you?
I have what was given to us at the um, what was part of the documents that I.
Okay, we look, I'm, I'm looking at exact uh items that was provided to the entire commission on that commission meeting.
Okay, I can pull mine up because it's not attached.
Okay.
It's not attached to the email that was sent to us.
No, it's a part of your commission package, your agenda package. I'm looking under change order breakdown, I'm looking on page two of that breakdown. And I am under material description, number one, May twenty-twenty-two asphalt price adjustment. Uh, at one quantity lump sum, the unit cost of seven thousand four hundred thirty dollars and eleven cents. And June of twenty-twenty-three asphalt price increase. So these are multiple increases of, of asphalt prices. That's a lump sum amount and a unit cost of two thousand nine hundred forty dollars and sixty cents.
It didn't have how much per unit, like on this?
It was, it was lump sum. It's not, it's not per unit.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I was trying to go based on how this right here, what was the unit. Um, then I know you were saying it increased, I was trying to see what did it increase to back then?
Okay, let, let, let me finish. Uh, the material subtotal is ten thousand three hundred seventy dollars and seventy-nine cents between those two price changes in May of twenty-twenty-two and June of twenty-twenty-three. So when you add that amount to the bond and general liability insurance of two hundred sixteen dollars and twelve cents. You get a total of ten thousand five hundred eighty-six dollars and ninety-one cents, which was um defined in the resolution and backup information. And what the commission approved for uh reimbursement to D O T. This amount, uh, and I think I mentioned to, to you before, the commission before, I by no means am an engineer. Uh, I understand most of the documents, but when I don't understand fully, I, I call and I have meetings with the parties that can give me. The exact information, and mostly those are experts in the field, engineers, whether it's the city's engineer, D O T engineer. Or engineers associated with, with, with the project overall. Um, this is different from the amount that you're considering today. The contract will allow for lump sum payments and they will allow for per-unit payments. And it, it's confusing if you, if you don't know the jargon, the, the, the engineer calculations. Uh, if you don't know that, it can be very confusing. But by no means will I ever bring you anything for your consideration, and I think staff can attest to it. I've actually delayed change orders because all the parties. Had not signed off on it. So what I'm saying to you Commissioner and the commission. I will not present to you anything that I haven't vetted, that not has, have not been approved by all parties associated with the project. Because I just don't think that's fair to you and to the community. So everything that I bring to you is well-vetted, has been approved on multi-levels. In all situations except this one and the one that I referenced before, have been reimbursed either by Department of Transportation. Or Palm East County Water Utilities that's associated with anything water-related for this project. Uh, so we're, we're not trying to uh pull anything over you.
No, I was asking, cause I'm trying to go somewhere with that, cause I have some other questions, the reason that I'm asking.
I understand, but I just need to say this because it's been. Indirectly assumed that we're not providing the information. And we're not doing our due diligence in our providing the information. And it becomes very difficult to continue to do that, to work to get all the information, to have staff work over and above. To get the information and to be insinuated that one of two things, we don't know what we're doing and we're not being honest. And the city of Pohokee, I'm not sure how it ran and operated before, but it does not do that now.
Another question. Do we have a timeline as far as if um this project is approved, when it, it will be completed? And also um. How would the budget adjustments be made as far as I spending a hundred and twenty-one thousand?
Okay, yes, sir. The tentative, the way that the schedule is, is at this point, the final lay will be done on the eight, eighteenth. We have to do some serious coordination with a lot of moving parts, namely having uh traffic control. Uh, closing the highway down to only um. Uh, residents as it was done before a while back. Uh, in addition, we need to coordinate with the development that's going on there now with uh Everglades Town Home. And also um the um, the retirement facility that's there. Um, I mean, the adult healthcare facility that's there. We've already started that process. And if everything goes according to plan. And if everything goes according to plan, the, it will be a five-day project with the rollout on the eighteenth, up to five days, it may not take five days. And during that five-day period, all of the final overlay will be done. The striping will be done and it will take up to fourteen days for the asphalt to completely cure. During that fourteen-day process, we'll begin, uh, working on the punch list, developing the punch list and scheduling the punch list. So ideally, we're looking to have this project done, um, roughly a week before Christmas. And that will give us the opportunity to, um, finish out the project. And potentially looking at any other thing outside of this project that would need to be done to, as I mentioned, to, uh, Barack Obama. We may have to look at different funding source if that is not taken care of in this final lift, which I will, I'm almost certain that it will not be. So there would probably be a need to do a front, funding project through, uh, a capital project, uh, using additional dollars that we have at the city's exposure to complete that milling project. We don't know what that cost will be at this time. We anticipate having that information probably within the next week or two. But as it stands as designed and as constructed, this project as we know it today will be completed approximately a week before Christmas.
You said the eighteenth, that's, you know, grandmother eighteen.
Yes, sir.
The budget.
Where would the money come from?
The money. The money will come from, um, the, the city's general fund. Uh, from a timing standpoint, we're in a pretty good position because a lot of the, uh, cost revenue sharing from the state will start trickling in within the next week and a half, two weeks. And that will continue throughout, uh, the month of January. So we'll have a sizable amount of funds that come in on average, uh, through our cost sharing with the state to come in and we anticipate using, uh, a part of that to cover of the costs that we have borne here. There are some construction, road construction dollars in existing budget as it stands now. Uh, we will, you'll mark a percentage of that to go towards this as well.
And that come from which department in the budget? I'm just trying to understand, keep up with what you're saying. So the general fund money hasn't been allocated for anything? That's what you could just use the money that you're speaking of and just be used for anything? It hasn't been allocated for anything else that it will impact the budget?
Uh, yes and no. You just can't use it for anything, but there, there.
Figure out where is it, exactly. I'm just trying to ask specifically, you know, to see how it's going to impact the budget. What department is it coming from or?
On the public works, you would have a line item that's road construction.
Uh huh.
And we're looking to have a percentage to come directly from there. And then, as I mentioned, the balance, we're, we're anticipating quite a, quite a bit of money this time of the year for revenue sharing from the state of Florida.
And those projects that we had for public works under road construction, you will provide with us what they were? Because I think it was five hundred and something thousand dollars allocated and how, what project? I'm, I'm just trying to find out what projects is that going to impact? I know that funding is allocated, but we didn't get exactly what we're going to be doing with the five hundred, two thousand dollars. I know it was put there. Just trying to find out how is that going to impact what you had in mind or what that five hundred and two thousand dollars was supposed to be used for?
Uh, we.
Projects it.
We purposely didn't do anything greater in detail, uh, because any road construction-related projects for the city, on the average, we allocate that amount to cover those areas over and above, uh, what we have in, um, and some of the funds that's available to do road construction projects. So to answer your question, there's no identifiable projects. It's road and construction generally.
So we just put the five hundred, two thou, I'm just trying to figure out how we came up with that number then. I know we approved it and I should have been asking all these questions then, but now that I've taken the time to go and look back at it, I, I, I voted on it too quick, but.
Yeah.
So now that's why I'm asking the questions. I mean, we, we put it there. I'm sure we had to say we were going to do something.
Yeah, we, we got a lot, a lot of road projects that we can do something with, with, what? The, the rationale behind it is that a lot of projects are planned, a lot of project, the funding is in place hopefully through grants, but when there is not funding for grants to cover a lot of the things, a lot of the roads that Mayor and Vice Mayor and the commission talked about that needs repairing, those dollars can, can repair those. Certain, certain, certain tax dollars can repair, make repairs as well. So, um, the idea is to have as many grant dollars come in to cover those projects as possible. But at some point, if there's no grant dollars available, if there, if that allows us to do a part of a road or overall overlay of a road, then that money will allow us to do that. Is it enough money to do a completely street or a complete section? No, that's why we rely heavily on, uh, the different phases of funding that we requested through the state. That will give us a bigger boost, but if all else fails, then there's an opportunity to use monies under road and construction to, to do some of those smaller components of a overall larger project.
We'll, we'll come back to Commissioner Karen Williams. We certainly want her to be able to answer, ask all the questions she needs asked, but I want to be fair and make sure that everyone have an opportunity, if they have any questions, to ask them. In the end, we'll sort of be balanced as much as possible. So in addition to those questions, has already been asked, do any other commissioner have any questions also?
I think the ones that I had written down, he's answered as far as the striping, that we will, the road will be striped. Also, I know it's not just on Barack Obama, there's a couple of other roads that where they cut so much into when he was doing Barfield. Would that also be asphalt? I don't know the name of the street, you know, the number of the streets, but there's like two streets where they cut into off of Barfield.
Intersections.
Intersections, right. Would that also be covered?
Yes, yes.
And also I know the manholes, because I'm, yeah, they're up, they're all that would be once the military's brought up to the level, so that would be.
Yes, ma'am. That was one of the other questions that we discussed in length today. Um, making sure that the, the manholes are flush with the road and the final lift will give us a flushed. You won't have manhole sticking up throughout the road, throughout the road. It'll be, it'll be taken care of with that final lift of asphalt.
And just as, just to make a statement, I know we, we all went into the meeting in, in, uh, Belkley. Uh, and they were, and Elka was talking about the roads.
Mm hmm.
Um, one thing that they did say, no, they don't do, um, demucking. You know, they say sad that the muck is good for one thing, but bad for another.
Mm hmm.
And, um, from what they were telling us there, that with the state, the roads, they don't really come out the roads more than what fifteen to twenty years.
Right.
On a road project. And for this area, this area, they're trying to move it to a seven to eight year. I think, uh, for this area because of the muck that we're on. But as Elka, it's very costly, so they just only go down much just to do a, just leave a road, but. And because of the traffic that's coming on the roads, the cost of the asphalt is why our roads is, is like they are, but so.
And in addition to that, she did also say that, um, because I know that was one of the ask. And she said that was a very hard ask because the county and the state are, you know, somewhat behind on their own. Uh, so to be able to get that type of funding for roads, uh, would be a very hard ask to do at this juncture.
So that's all I, that's all I had for the manholes and each striping.
And I tried to check in with the city manager on these issues, so I'm pretty much hearing the same things.
Okay.
We do have an opportunity for comments at the end. Could be younger, could be specific related to this item. I go back to Commissioner Williams now to finish up her final question.
Thank you. Um, with the punchlines, um, city manager, I know you said you were gonna, you were, were out with them today. I'm not sure if you ident, they identified some of the concerns that, you know, still may be on the street. So with the punchlines that come up, how is those going to be paid for once they go out, put this last layer on, if they're little punchlines, like you said? How are those going to be paid for? I know we don't know the cost of them yet. We don't even know what they are.
Right.
But how would those even be paid for?
Oh, we have a total of a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars available in the grant that's remaining. Um, we don't have any other outstanding issues outside of the punch list. I did mention there, there will be some additional costs for, um, inspections. We don't know what those dollar, those amounts are yet.
Mm hmm.
But ideally, we will have enough to finish the punch list. And the punch list is basically where everything has been done. And as you indicated, there may be, um, an issue here, an issue there. It's not anticipated it'll be a major issue. But anything that's outstanding beyond the design and the plans for the, for the, uh, project will go on that punch list. And as those punch lists are developed and scheduled, we'll then have an idea of what those costs may be. It may be one item on the punch list, it may be ten items on the punch list. But we'll develop that and develop a price for each. And ideally, we will have through, in that hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars, the ability to pay for it.
And D O T let us use the hundred and sixty-nine dollars for the punch list, but just not to pay for the asphalt?
Not to pay for the asphalt because as I indicated a minute ago, they have paid for increase of asphalt multiple times. And from a funding standpoint, they can't continue to justify the cost of the increase of asphalt. And it's been said over and over again, and it's, it's, it's pretty much commonplace to compare the price of asphalt these days to the price of gas. It goes up. Very seldom does it come down, but if it comes down, depending on inflation and all the other those, uh, other factors, it can go up and it's been going up. Asphalt is one of those things that's been going up and up and up and up since COVID. Uh, we don't have control of that.
And just a few last ones and I'll be done. And I did hear you when you said this project has taken a while. We know it's taken a while. And one of my questions is, is that we see it has cost the city money as well. And we do know we want the city to be funding, to be used, um, to the best of, you know, where it can stretch. I'm gonna ask, what do you have a plan in place so that this does not happen in the future? So that when residents are asking us questions, so that what needs to be done needs to be done in a timely manner? That so it's not taking, uh, you know, a long amount of time to, you know, this project has been, we, what you said, we was funded for in two thousand nineteen? And so do we have anything in place for the city? So that we can make sure that we're being effective at getting everything done in a timely manner?
Short answer, Commissioners, yes. We have staff in place now, uh, for any unforeseen emergencies. We shouldn't be in a position where a project will last multiple years beyond its completion, its original completion date. Uh, I will tell you, in the last six months, um, a lot has been accomplished with staff and with, with these projects, with this being one of the major ones. Um, when, when we started working on this again, when, when things started, when we got the, the Rosso back to the table, when we got engineers back to the table, when we got staff in place to, to really start moving this project again. Before then, uh, the development company was threatening to completely walk away from this project. And you may have been privy to some of those conversations.
That's why I was asking, what safeguards do we have in place now?
The safeguards you have now is a committed staff to make sure things like this don't happen.
And, and, but there's no written plan to make sure, I mean, I know, I don't know what the process is because I know we do have some projects that are out there now to make sure. And, and the price is going up and the monies that we have, we're probably not going to be able to do much with it. But, um, a plan or a safeguard in place, like would, to execute the projects? That they're not taking so long to make sure that we're executing and getting paperwork done in a timely manner so that we can get more for the dollars that we are being granted.
Yes, ma'am.
And if it is be that we need to get someone to train, to come in to say, okay, the, this is a, we can look at getting projects executed this way. You know, if it's going to benefit the city, if somebody can come in and do that, or if we need that, or whatever it is that it may be, just so that we're not in the same situation again and we can get more bang for our buck, if that's what it takes. Because it costs us more to fix these projects than to say, get someone to come in and give us what we need in order to get these projects taken care of.
Yes, ma'am.
That's the only thing that I'm saying, so we can get more bang for our bucks, if that's something that we need to look at.
Yes, ma'am. Each project, uh, and I'll be real brief, each project itself bring forth the plan that you described. They have time parameters, it has deadlines, it has dollars, and it has responsibilities for all parties included. Each project that we've been working on, uh, that has been delayed, as I was trying to explain to you a minute ago, they're moving now. They're back on track. And we have, uh, a plan in place to execute the contract as originally, uh, proposed and originally agreed upon. Up until then, I, I kind of explained some of the challenges and hiccups that we've had as a city. Those things are not in place anymore. You have a staff, you have commitment level, we have a commission that's moving things as is presented and recommended to them. So I don't foresee any challenges. We've gone through three audits, we've closed two, we're in the process of closing two more. And we're already beginning conceptually working on twenty twenty-four audit. So there's a, there's been a lot going on, but I will tell you, the staff has worked tirelessly to make sure that we're back on track. And each project has a plan that we've committed to work until it's completed. The ones that, uh, preceded my administration, we're going to catch and close those up. The ones that's going to come as a result of me being here will not fall in the same predicament that the ones in the past have fallen into. I've committed myself, staff has committed themselves to make sure that that don't happen in the future. So those, those are the plans that we have.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we have some safeguards in place so we don't run into that. So we can, you know, utilize our money as much as, you know, what we're getting, because we do know the price is going up.
Yes, ma'am.
Before we move on, let's keep in mind we're at this particular time dealing with , uh, questions concerning the resolution that we're voting on. Others can come on the comments. And I think all the questions that have been very important and need to be addressed. And I think the city manager continued to give at least some in-depth answers to those concerns and questions. But we will have an opportunity, I want to do this because we do have a motion and we do have a second on the floor. But I just want to make sure that any other questions pertaining to the motion itself. So you'll have a building form way of voting. Are there any additional questions pertaining to this motion? Here in, uh, are you ready for a vote?
I'm, I'm sorry, ma'am, but I have one question. Did we say all the funding was going to come from, um, roads?
No, a portion will come from roads and a portion will come from, as I described a minute ago, we're anticipating, um, revenue sharing dollars from the state.
So we won't have to do a budget amendment or anything?
You still would have to do a budget amendment, yes, but that'll come later. I anticipate having budget adjustments as early as next commission meeting. That will identify any changes in the budget that was originally approved. And my goal is to have those amendments every three months, so you're well aware of any change in the movement in the budget. And, and you won't see it as a surprise. Uh, and it will be discussed prior to any adjustments. And you will have those adjustments in enough time to, to, to understand them and ask questions if you have any questions before you vote on any of that.
So they're going to be able to go ahead and start on the project, because I know you said they needed to be able to get it done.
Yes.
Even if we have, we're going to vote and to pass it and then you do the budget later?
No, the, the monies are.
Budget amendment later, so, because I know you said it needed to be done because they wouldn't be able to do it after, if we didn't have this meeting today. So if we're going to have a meeting later, so how are they going to get started then, if we got to do a budget amendment?
Budget amendments, not having a budget amendment does not prevent you from completing a project. Uh, you can utilize the funds that you have in the budget and you can adjust those, the total overall budget, uh, at a point in time that will allow you to continue to work on projects. You don't have to do a budget amendment. You don't have to do a budget amendment before you approve a project.
Cause you have way, plenty of money now.
Right. And that's standard government practices, accounting practices. That's not Polk. You're doing anything different than any governmental entity in the state of Florida.
Having asked and answered the majority of the questions, that's what's asked. We're ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Calvin Williams?
No.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Motion passed by a majority for one vote.
Next, we'll have a, just a brief discussion of comments or concerns from the commissioner. And I'll start with Commissioner Mike Pearson.
Point of, point of order, mayor. With this being called a special meeting with only this item on the agenda, and attorney, please chime in when it's needed. Uh I think we're restricted to only discuss items associated with this particular project and item because it was the only thing that was advertised.
Okay, well, we haven't been real consistent with that because this comment have always been included, so
It's for the public.
Make sure that we don't continue to do that.
Mm-hmm.
So even if a comment's concerning to this vote, we still should be able to discuss it, make a comment on it?
I'm gonna lean to the attorney on that, and maybe even the clerk.
Okay.
My experience is that if you call a special meeting and it's identify what that particular item for the special meeting is, limits your ability to discuss anything over and above that because the public was not notified and presented with the information that will be a part of the public meeting.
Right, that, that specific item was noticed, but there is a general section here for discussion, comments, and concerns as you always close out the meetings, Mr. Mayor. So as long as you keep the comments general, I think they're permissible, permitted under the agenda that you published and noticed to the public.
And we can even do a little better than that if your comments are there, that it be related a little to this particular discussion. Commissioner McPherson?
Yes, uh I just want to say, you know, my greatest concern is that we're here for the, for the citizen. And when I'm asking questions, it's because I have the citizens' best interest at heart, not that any slight on this administration, but things have happened in the past and we have to have a decorum of transparency. And that's my take on it. And anytime I'm asking questions, it's just to make sure that, you know, our community is getting, getting served. And then, and maybe sometime when I'm getting questions about certain things, I want to be able to adequately be able to explain to the citizens, um those that are within the realm of my responsibility. But as far as general comments, you know, just, I'm just wanting to see this project get done. And I was hoping we didn't have to foot the bill, but if we do, we, I can live with that, um as I, as I voted. But we just need to make sure that we constantly moving forward. And this is no slight on Mr. Jackson, the other administration here with the uh group of commissioners that we have now, we are moving, moving forward. But, you know, don't take asking questions, we can't take it personal because we are looking out for the best interest of our citizens.
Yes, sir. Commissioner, I completely agree. I completely agree. And as, as a part of my comments early on, it's not uncommon for a project of this magnitude for cities, even of this size, to budget and plan for a ten percent contingency of the total project. Do we have funding to do that? Do we have the ability to do that today in our budget? No. Um but that's not uncommon. And um I don't have any issues with the questions at all. Uh as a matter of fact, I invite questions. Uh
Okay. We'll move now to Commissioner Bowden.
Well, I'd just say, um I agree with Commissioner McPherson. Uh I do want the project to be over and done with. Um of course, it's always better to have someone else pay for it, uh but given the situation that we're in, we have an opportunity to get it done. And uh that's the direction that we're going in. When it comes down to the questioning, um you know, we're all different. We do things a little differently. Uh you may think that I don't have any questions in the commission meeting. I talked to the city manager personally, like this is kind of like a rerun for me, but I've already heard all of these things that, that he's discussed and explained. But we're all different. Some of us are gonna ask these same questions, the same questions that I asked him personally. Uh are the same questions that some of you are asking here in the commission meeting. There's nothing wrong with either. Um for the past couple of years, the main words have been stability for us. Um I think uh the city manager was alluding to the stability of staff. Of course, we can always be better, but also stability on the commission's part. Uh part of the reason why certain things don't get done, it, it falls on us. And uh us creating stability uh even for the city manager. We've turned over a lot over the past few years, and I'm hoping that we can continue uh as a DAAS, where we've done a lot together. Uh we do have stability here, and that's been the main word. Everyone uh that uh, you know, is a part of what we're doing, this is what they ask for, even people who are no longer with us. Uh it, it's about stability, and we have to show and project that. Um I'm very excited about our future uh with the staff that we have. Uh of course, I believe that Mr. Jackson is going to continue to approve upon that. But it starts with us, and we can't continue to turn over. We have to continue to work together and show that stability. That's been the main word for some years here. We need stability, and I think that that's the direction that we're headed in. So I'm hoping that we can continue to do this, ask the tough questions. Um everyone continue to do their research, and I remain positive and optimistic about uh Polk moving forward. So.
Commissioner Calvin Williams?
Yes, I um just wanted to let the residents know the reason that I voted no is not because I don't want the road completed. I do want the road completed. I live here just like all the other residents. But we got eight, three point eight million dollars, and I have asked since I've been on the DAAS, um how much have we spent on change orders? Where, that's why I've been asking the questions that I've been asking because I knew this was going to come, that at some point we've been change order and change order and change order. And I've been asking, how much have we spent on change orders? I've never been able to be given that information. We've been approving change orders, but what has been our total? And where are we at with the budget? And I think if we had been looking at that throughout the project, we every time I feel that when we did a change order, we should say, okay, this is where we are with the budget. We spent this and this is where we are. And because I think that we've been given three point eight million dollars, I don't see everywhere, I haven't, I don't have anything outlined in front of me of what has been done without change orders and what was done um with change orders. And so that's my reasoning because I don't know exactly how the three point eight was spent on the original project and outside of the change order. So that was my reasoning for voting no, not because I don't want the road done, but I wanted to be able to see how the three point eight million dollars has been spent on the road for our city.
Thanks, Mayor Mervin.
You have nothing, ma'am.
This time having all our questions answered and at least asked. I would entertain a motion for the adjournment of this special committee.
So move.
It's been moved by Commissioner Vice Mayor Mervin, seconded by Commissioner Bowden. Call for question, you're none. Ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Commissioner Calvin Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes.
As you're in this meeting.
Thank you, thank you guys for giving a party your Friday evening as well.